Good evening, I'd like to call the general regular monthly meeting to order if everyone would please rise with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. White, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, please, Ms. Votchak.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Jackson is not with us, Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine is not with us, Ms. Daisart.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votchak. Before we go on to the first item on the agenda, at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for one of our former longtime teachers and educators. She was a teacher and assistant principal, and then a principal for many, many years. Ms. Gail Fayard. So a moment of silence, please, Ms. Gail Fayard. Thank you. And I deepest condolences and sympathies go out to the Fayard family. Okay, first item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'd like to, at this time, open a public hearing regarding the 2024-25 General Fund and Special Revenue Funds budgets. Is there anyone in the audience at this time that would like to speak on the budget? Okay, there being none, the public hearing is now closed. Okay. I guess we need a motion on that.
Why don't we do just a...
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the opening and closing of the public hearing?
I'll motion to accept the opening and closing of the public hearing on the budget.
Okay, Ms. Harris makes that motion, and seconded by Ms. Kelly Lee Bowman. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Ms. Votchak. Next item is a communications update. And with us tonight, good evening for SuperNews in the API Award, Ms. Fel.
Good evening, school board members, hope you are well. I have my communications packet for the month of May in front of you. This contains all of the press releases that we've pushed out so far this month. You can see that there's a lot of graduation and end of year commencement, so there's kind of a pattern in there. We also have a SuperNews feature for you tonight, it'll be the last of the school years, and we will have, I think, Araby Elementary and Shawman High School as our school features on SuperNews. And we also have updates with numbers for like social media and website at the back of the packet where the SuperNews list is located, it just shows you engagement and how many people were looking at our posts, engaging with our posts. One of our most popular ones was the grad walk that the Shawman High School class of 2024 did before their graduation, it was really cool. I believe it's in our SuperNews. So, without further ado, enjoy May's edition of the SuperNews.
And now from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for SuperNews. Hello and welcome to our May episode of SuperNews.
There's been so much going on, we'll just dive on in.
And since Shawman High School is always such a hub of activity, let's start with its news team there.
Hello from Shawman High School, I'm Esma Asgar.
And I'm Denham Bell, and we'll kick off our segment with the new tradition, grad walk. Before our seniors walked across the stage to get their diploma, they took a few steps back down the halls they used to call home. Seniors visited each of our seven elementary schools dressed in cat the gown for this special event.
The grad walk event serves as an inspiration to young students who are just beginning their academic journeys, while also providing seniors with an opportunity to appreciate just how far they have come and the teachers and administrators along the way who have helped shape them into who they are today. Students and staff from each elementary school cheered, sang, yelled, hugged, laughed, and cried, and made art to congratulate the participating seniors on their big night. As you can see, there are a lot of reunions and a lot of smiles in the halls.
And of course, later that day, more than 500 seniors celebrated graduation. The Bobby Nutt Stadium was packed when the Shawman High's class of 2024 officially walked into the next chapter of their lives. Warm evening sunlight and a pleasant breeze were the perfect backdrop for the celebration.
Master of ceremonies for the evening was senior class president Carlos Andrade, who was joined onstage by other senior class officers and the valedictorians for this year.
We'd also like to give a special shout-out to Troy Sina, who has presented the American Legion Award for his courage, honor, leadership, patriotism, scholarship, and service. Nice job, Troy.
Many of these outstanding seniors, who are also part of Senior Awards Night, were the best and the brightest gathered for this annual event, celebrating academic excellence. Awards, scholarships, and the coveted Golden Owl presentation were all part of the ceremony.
Congratulations also go out to the members of our Air Force ROTC and instructors. The unit was recently recognized with the highest rating attainable, as the program exceeds standards in the development of cadets' leadership, communication, and collaboration.
Participants can also earn college credit and scholarship dollars, and grow as a person through teamwork, commitment, and citizenship.
The program also teaches skills crucial to success, like time management, accountability, and the benefits of community service. From flying drones to launching rockets, the varied programs help instill self-confidence while engaging them in advanced technology and career training. And like I always say, you can't be a good pilot if you have a bad altitude.
Hey, Denham, that was a nice attempt at an airplane joke, but to me, it just didn't land. Anyway, in other news, we'd like to congratulate all of our student athletes here at Shawman High. Over 500 students took part in 17 team sports, and this brought home nine district titles.
Our baseball team set a record-winning 30 games this season, and two of our volleyball standouts, Gabby Landry and Liv Peters, just signed scholarships to continue their athletic careers at Nickel State University. Congratulations to all of our coaches and players for taking our Owl athletic program to new heights.
And finally, we would like to salute our longtime principal, Mr. Wayne Warner, who was recently the subject of a documentary called "The Warner Way." The film highlights his incredible journey at Shawman High and the profound influence he has had in shaping the lives of countless individuals like ours.
Thank you, Mr. Warner, for all you have done, and thanks to all of you for tuning in today. And remember, the choices you make today shape your world tomorrow.
Share your world tomorrow. Nice job, Owls! And now we'll keep on our educational path as we see this year's Leadership St. Bernard class in action. Nearly 30 community members are a part of this year's class, myself included, and one of our recent classes focused on education. Hosted at Nunez Community College, there are many presenters, including our very own superintendent, Doris Votchak. It was informative and helpful for others to understand the successes and the challenges inherent in both higher education and our public schools.
Other recent classes included those that were part of Art from the Heart, an after-school wellness program for our employees. Funded by the St. Bernard Hospital and held at the MoMA Center, the program creates fun opportunities for educators, as we see here in the recent culinary class. Doug Broselman, the owner and chef at Mimi's Restaurant, was on hand for the demo. Not only did the 20 participants learn to roll out pasta, they also got to eat the shrimp fettuccine with tomato confit that he had prepared. It was a tasty way to close out the inaugural series.
Also pastitively awesome are all of the educators who celebrated literacy. Here we see the members of our award-winning St. Bernard Reading Council's end-of-year banquet celebration, honoring longtime educator Marilyn Westfall. Great food, awards, and the changing of the guard were all part of the event, as next year's leadership team takes office. Congratulations to this year's award winners, and best of luck to the new council officers.
And while we're here at Araby Elementary, let's meet its news team here. Okay, take it away, Audrey and Maxwell.
Thanks and welcome to our school. We'll begin with a look at a huge success, our cultural diversity night. It was truly a trip around the world, as guests had their passports to travel, to enjoy live performances, and delicious foods from different regions and countries. It was really a celebration of unity and community.
Our fifth graders also had a celebration when they headed to City Park for a field trip. They joined other students for a day of fun and friendship. They also had the run of the amusement park, as the park was shut down just for them.
Hey, Audrey, I wonder why the soccer ball didn't come with us on the field trip?
Maybe he was tired of getting kicked around. In other news, we'd like to congratulate Ms. Turnbull, who did an amazing job on her first art show at Araby, titled "A World of Habitats." Everything was glow-in-the-dark. Families were able to walk through and see pre-cased fairy garden, kindergarteners' Arctic, first grade's bayou, second grade's desert, third grade's ocean, and fourth and fifth grades' rainforest. Families were also given the opportunity to be creative in various art stations. It was fun to see art come to life.
And we'll end our segment today with a day of action, as we see members of the United Way of Southeast Louisiana volunteers working at our school. They begin with re-painting our car ride-along space, checkerboards and a map of the United States on the concrete in the recess area. They will return in June to finish the painting projects and work in our gardens. We are thankful for all their help.
And we are thankful to all of you for joining us today, here at Araby, the home of the alligators. Bye!
Thanks, Araby! And thanks to all of our fifth graders who took part in this year's Goat in the Road playwright program. After a year of working with professional artists and learning to write their own plays, students from across the district had the chance to watch these plays come to life, thanks to the talents of three professional theater troupes. Let's take a look.
Don't listen to him, he's mean, now boo, he's lying!
I forgot, and you've been running after me! Surrender! Are we killed?
Thanks to the Muro Foundation for funding, and to our theater educators and fifth-grade teachers who worked so hard to take it all from the page to the stage.
We'd also like to give a shout-out to Shawman High School's Linda Ross, and Lacoste Elementary School's Melissa Doucang, who were recently honored by the Delta Chapter of the American Petroleum Institute. These educators were recognized for their commitment to teaching, resourcefulness, professional involvement, and community service. For their excellence in and out of the classroom, the API Teacher Award Program bestowed Ross the Chairman's Award and Doucang the Distinguished Teacher Award. We are proud of your efforts in helping to share our legacy of learning.
The month of May truly is a whirlwind, as dozens of events take place at all of our schools. Here we see some of the music, dance, and drama that represent just a taste of all the great programs that we celebrate. Our students are truly lucky to have so many opportunities to learn and grow as performers, and we're grateful for all the sponsors and behind-the-scenes stage folks who make these programs possible.
And speaking of talent, we are happy to announce the production for this year's Performing Arts Academy.
I heard it's Something Rotten.
No, no, it's a great show! It's a very funny musical spoof.
No, the name of the show is Something Rotten.
Oh, yeah, I knew that. And it truly is a hilarious musical comedy, taking to the stage June 27th through the 30th.
And as those performers are preparing for the stage, our eighth graders are walking across the stage as they bid adieu to middle school.
Here we see some of the exit ceremonies of Andrew Jackson, Trist, and St. Bernard Middle. And while we will miss them at middle school, we look forward to seeing them next year at the Ninth Grade Academy.
Well, that's all the time we have here for today. Have a great summer, and we'll see you next time on SuperNews.
Where we always let the SuperNews roll! Bye!
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Fel. That was a great SuperNews, and congratulations again to all the seniors of Shawman High School graduating class, over 500 of them.
Yes.
And the students and the spokeswoman and men of Penn TV, and we appreciate all that you did to put this together. As Mr. Lemoine said, May is a crazy time, so many activities going on, and so many things to fill in the end of the year, so thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And congratulations to all who participated, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Jackson, and also Ms. Lemoine.
Yes.
Ms. Fel, thank you. Do you have anything else?
Yes, we actually have Ms. Linda Ross with us here tonight, which is one of our API certificate and award winners and recognition, so I wanted to bring her up if possible.
Okay, Ms. Ross.
And present her with her certificate and her check tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Ross, congratulations.
Hello, thank you.
So, Ms. Ross, Linda Ross, received the Chairman's Awardee in recognition of dedication to teaching, resourcefulness, professional involvement, and community service, presented on this first day of May 2024. This is the Delta Chapter of the American Petroleum Institute, Delta Chapter Award, so congratulations to you, and also, the Delta Chapter of American Petroleum Institute awarded you with a $500 award stipend, so congratulations, and we appreciate all of your hard work, and that also that you're being recognized by the Delta Chapter. And we also want to recognize at this time, and Ms. Doucang is not here, but she also was recognized, so we want to congratulate Ms. Doucang also, and we thank her for her service to our students in St. Bernard Parish, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
No. No.
Okay, well, come around.
Well, before she does that, before she does that, Ms. Ross is a math teacher at Shawman High School, and why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're teaching this year?
This year, I'm teaching the Algebra III Dual Enrollment Course, and I'm getting my certification at the end of this summer to be the teacher of record. So by the end of this summer, I will have completed my 18 hours of graduate math classes, and I can be hired by Nunez to be the teacher of record.
And I just wanted to make that point, because Ms. Ross is one of our dual enrollment teachers, and with that certification, she can be an adjunct professor at the college, and she's able to issue both college credit and high school credit for our students at Shawman High School, and that's quite an achievement to go back and get 18 graduate hours in mathematics, that's no small feat. So I wanted to congratulate her, not only for the wonderful teaching that she does each and every day at Shawman High, but for going forward and going beyond, and getting those advanced certifications that will help our students earn college credit while in high school. So, wanted to thank you for that, Ms. Ross.
Thank you.
Ms. Ross, if you would come around. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
From fellow math teachers.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Fel, do we want to take a group picture with the board members?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay. Board members, if y'all would come around a little bit. Okay, congratulations again to Ms. Ross, and also to Ms. Doucang. Thank you, Ms. Fel. All right, next item on the agenda is an approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee meeting minutes of May 14, 2024 into the minutes of May 28, 2024, regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, is there a second?
No.
Second by Mr. Long? Any discussion?
I have something.
Yes. Ms. Rodney?
I was looking at Section 3 when we did the discussion of the relocation of the Smith Elementary School. I know it states basically verbatim of what DA Nicosia gave us as far as the statute of the law that prohibits us from selling W. Smith. Also, if possible, Kent would like to add the actual law that he stated it from, that's RS 17:87.6, and RS 41:892. I would like for the minister to reflect that actual law, because in that law, there's no verbiage that says we cannot, it says we shall under certain circumstances. So I would be more than happy if that reflects this actual law, since we have this interpretation of the law as well.
So you're asking to change the minutes, Ms. Rodney?
I'm asking to add, to make an amendment to the minutes to submit the actual law that DA Nicosia referenced.
Okay. Ms. Votchak, do we have a copy of the actual law?
I have actually right here.
Yes, we do. We can amend the minutes to include that law.
To include that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, do you want to make that into form of a motion, Ms. Rodney?
Yes, I would like to move that we need, at the minutes from last meeting, which is May 14, 2024, that it reflects the two statutes that DA Nicosia referenced in his memo, RS 17:87.6, RS 41:892.
Okay. Mr. Warner, since you made the motion, would you agree to that amendment to include that law?
So moved.
The law that he provided us with? And Mr. Long, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there's an amended motion, and a second to the, Mr. Long, to the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine two.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of April 23, 2024, as published on May 24, 2024.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine two.
Thank you. Next item, or personnel changes for May 2024, and we have several additions since the committee meeting, and we do have a retirement I would like to recognize, Shawman High School Industrial Arts teacher, Thomas Wooden. We want to thank Mr. Wooden for his years of service to Shawman High School in industrial arts, and wish him a very happy retirement. Are there any questions at this time? Okay, there being none. We do not need action on this item. Next item on the agenda is an approval of administration's request for permission to mail letters of assurance. There was a recommendation by the committee. Is there a motion on the floor?
Um...
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, to accept, seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine two.
Thank you. Next is an approval of the renewal of flood insurance policy. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Long.
I'm second.
Second by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? We have with us tonight Clements Insurance, for Mr. Clements and Clements. If there are any questions? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine two.
Okay, next item is an approval of the bid tabulation for bread and bread products for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee. Ms. Rodriguez? Ms. Rodriguez moves. Seconded by Ms. Rodney. And I believe that tabulation will all lowest bids. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine two.
Thank you. And Mr. Morell, if you'd like to come out, just in case there were some questions, approval of bid tabulation for milk and milk products for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. White, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Good evening, Mr. Morell.
Good evening.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine two.
Next item is an approval of the bid tabulation for food products for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morell.
Thank you.
Next item is an approval of the bid tabulation for official journal for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. Campbell makes the motion, seconded by Ms. Harris. Any discussion? Good evening, Mr. Fernandez. Mr. Campbell, discussion?
No, just a comment.
Okay.
Many thanks to Mr. Roy, who passed away, uh, when, what, two weeks ago.
Uh-huh.
And he's been very faithful to us, and to the committee, by publishing St. Bernard Voice.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, and I'll echo those same sentiments. Mr. Roy worked with us for many, many years, he's attended so many of our meetings, and has always been a pro-St. Bernard Parish, but also pro-education, and he will be surely missed, and our deepest condolences go out to the Roy family. Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for mentioning that, and again, you know, Mr. Roy was like one of us, he was just, he was a wonderful man, truly a gentleman. Ms. Votchak?
You know, I have to echo that, when I moved to the off, central office in 1988, he's one of the first people that I came in direct contact with, as we, you know, advertised in the St. Bernard Voice, he was a wealth of knowledge, and quite the historian. His family for generations has had the, had had the St. Bernard Voice, and had opened that paper many, 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 many years before. And the amount of historical perspective that he had, anytime an issue came up that we needed to discuss, he was, he was right there, and he worked extremely closely with the school system all of those years, and this community, as you said, Ms. Daisart, is surely going to miss his influence, and we lose, and we lost, I guess, a lot of historical knowledge with the passing of Mr. E.M. Roy. So he's truly a gentleman, and a scholar, and a historian, and a journalist, so we will miss him very deeply here in this community. So we will miss him very deeply here in this community.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Okay, we haven't voted on this issue yet, so, right? No, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine-two.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the bid tabulation for painting and body repairs for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee. There is a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any discussion? There being none, cast your votes.
Motion passes nine-two.
Thank you. Next is an approval of the bid tabulation for gas, diesel, and other automotive fluids for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. There was a recommendation by the committee. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. White. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine-two.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the tabulation of proposals for reading, language arts Tier One instructional materials for grades three through fifth. And there was a recommendation by the committee. And good evening, Ms. Halton.
I knew y'all missed me, so.
We do miss you. Glad you're here.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
For another month.
June 30.
Is there a motion on the floor at this time to accept the approval of tabulars?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Long.
I do have to say that my husband told me the other day he doesn't think he's going to be able to stand it. But anyway, because I get bored so quickly. Okay.
Wait, wait, we still have to vote on the first.
Oh, you have to vote. Okay, you have to vote on the first.
Is there any discussion on that motion and the second? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine-two.
Okay, now is an approval of tabulation of proposals for social studies.
And it's got the wrong number on top. It should be 6.10, and it's a 7.0, okay? With all the new demands of social studies, and social studies now piling the same as ELA, math, science, social studies, they all count the same on LEAP now. We have been begging for a Louisiana-based standards curriculum, and we put out an RFP, and middle school also is interested in this particular company. It's called Gallup Aid. And what we liked about it, it was the only one that turned in a proposal, to be honest with you, okay? But what we liked about it was the price, but also, we also liked that it was all-inclusive. It has all, it's all aligned to Louisiana State standards. It has an online program, it has a print program, and it has assessments attached to it, you know, so it's all-inclusive, and it's finished. Because a lot of the programs that they're doing now are not finished, okay? But this one is done, and everybody was very impressed with it when we looked at it, okay? And I know some of the principals today were at the conference, and they went to see it, and they liked it too because they called me. So anyway, that's our recommendation. I'd like to get approval for this tonight if we could, so we can move on this. It was the only company that actually responded to us, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Halton. Is there a motion to accept this proposal? There's a motion by Ms. Lee Bowman. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any further discussion or questions, Ms. Harris?
So they're on the Tier One list by the state.
Yes, third grade is Tier One right now, and fourth and fifth will be Tier One.
Thank you.
And I know sixth, seventh, and eighth is also on the route to becoming Tier One. But that's the program all the way through we're interested in. And that's, that's what I like about the alignment of our curricula because when we went with Amplify Science, it's all the way through high, I mean, middle school.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine-two.
Thank you, Ms. Halton.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next item is an approval of the 2024-2025 General Fund and Special Revenue Funds budgets. There was a recommendation by the committee, and we did hold a public hearing earlier tonight. Is there a motion on the floor at this time?
I'll move. If we approve the budget.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Fernandez? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Ms. Harris?
I don't know if it actually needs to be on the agenda, but it could possibly just be an email document. We discussed at the last meeting when we were talking about insurances that we've had our buildings appraised in the last few years. Could we get a copy of the appraised values of the buildings just so that we have them for reference when we're looking at insurances?
Mr. Fernandez, you can send that out to the members.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, next item is a board provided with the General Fund to actual report for April 2024. Ms. Votchay, you have any additions?
No, just included in your pack. It is the budget to actual. And, you know, we had a successful closing. Last Thursday was the last day for our students after we went through the eighth-grade ceremonies, the pre-k ceremonies, the kindergarten ceremonies, and the fifth-grade ceremonies, as well as the high school graduation. So it was a week of celebration for many students and their families at all different levels. So while students' last day was Thursday, our teachers came back on Friday for a records day, and we completed, I think, another successful year. We, many of our teachers and administrators are attending the Teacher Leader Summit as we speak in the Convention Center, which is today, tomorrow, and Thursday. And Thursday, we open officially for our summer skills programs. So we're going to have several hundred of our students attending those summer programs, and we're looking forward to that. So there's really no break, I don't think, at this particular time. We just move from one set of educational experiences to another set of educational experiences. And we're very, very lucky to have a teaching staff who has signed up to work with our students over the summer as they try to take somewhat of a break. But hopefully, they'll be rejuvenated in July when we'll have some PD going on and a break from those students as well.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, signify by saying aye. Aye. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.